I'd like to call the meeting to order, verify compliance with open meetings law notification and adopt the agenda. If you all stand with me to the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Okay, seeing no audience members, we'll skip three comments from the audience regarding agenda items. Move on to four gifts donations, recognition, student and staff spotlight versus Edgerton PTO donation with Chris.
Good evening.
Good evening.
So Lori Comas and I have been talking about this quite a bit. The PTO gives us a lot of funds throughout the entire year and those of you who are on board liaison know that. This is just one of the items, which is field trips allows us to go many places, all different grade levels. Without our PTO, we wouldn't be able to have the field experiences that we do have. But what Lori and I talked about is maybe it would be a good idea for us to just outline all of the things that our PTO does and kind of go down the line item by item of some of the bigger pieces that would land over a thousand. Because we could come up here basically every single time. So I think Lori's going to do that next month and then I'm going to do it in January.
Okay, great.
But we thank our PTO.
Thank you. And then on to B, WYBC donation.
Yeah, so it's a pretty intricate letter that they wrote to us from the WYBC generously giving us 2,600, not even just for the basketball club, but for the athletic program in general. So nice to see that donation come and Dave will put those dollars to use where he sees fit, based on the basketball club's open-ended donation. So very grateful for that.
And the copy of the letter is available in the packet online if you'd like to read it. But we thank the PTOs and the youth baseball club for these generous donations. Thank you. Moving on to five consent agenda. Five A is approval of November vouchers Rogers payable. B is approval of October 22nd, November 12th, 2018 school board minutes. C is acceptance of PTO donations. D is acceptance of Whitno youth basketball club donation. E is approval of personnel recommendations. Would anyone like to remove an item? Okay, seeing none, I'll take a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, seeing none, consent agenda passes. We've had a request to change the order of six and seven, so we'll do seven action items first instead of six. So seven A, Whitno High School honors program, class of 2022. Do you have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion or questions? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. B is Whitno High School course proposals, can I take a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second?
Aye.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. C is resolution awarding the sale of 6.16 million dollar general obligation promissory note. Motion to approve?
So moved.
All right, and second?
Second.
Okay, Mike?
Yeah, so we have Jordan Mastica from Baird's to kind of just give us a rundown of how the sale of bonds went today. Maybe just kind of a wrap-up in general as we close out, 16.16 total. And hopefully tell us some really good news.
Sure. Hello, everyone. This is Mike, so I'm Jordan Mastica, I'm with Baird. Here on behalf of Lisa Voisin, she was double booked, maybe triple booked. It's a very busy time of year for us. So I got the better meeting, much closer to home. But as Mike said, so we-
Can you make sure the green light is on?
It is on.
Perfect.
Okay.
I just wanted to make sure, you're good.
Sure.
Thank you.
So we're at the final phase of the financing for the referendum. Woo! Just a quick recap, if you all remember, we locked in the initial 10 million. The long-term bonds were the initial 10 million in the middle of the summer. And now we're at the second phase, locking in the remaining 6.16 million. So heading into the Thanksgiving holiday, we started marketing the bonds earlier last week. It's kind of a tricky time to sell bonds around the holiday. There's a positive and negative to it. The negative is that not a lot of bonds are being sold around this time. So maybe there's not a lot of investors focused on the bonds that are being sold. The positive is that there are not a lot of bonds being sold right now. So the bonds that are being sold and the people that are paying attention, they're going to be focusing on your bond. So we were hoping obviously that that was the case for you guys. So we started actually selling the bonds, going out into the market this morning. And it started out a little slow, to be honest with you. The first half hour, not a lot of reception, then all of a sudden we started getting a lot of orders. So I would think it was just a little bit of lag coming back from the holidays. And so we actually sold the bonds for a couple hours. And by the end of it, we had a lot of interest in the bonds for the district. In general, two to three times subscribed, so it means we had two to three times more orders than there were bonds available. So with that, we were able to get great rates for you guys. So real quick, I did hand out a little handout for everybody. So on page two, I just kind of detailed some of the highlights of the bonds themselves. As I said, 6.16 million. The dated in settlement date is January 2nd. So if you guys remember from the summer when we sold the first 10 million, the reason we did 10 million is that if a municipal issuer issues 10 million or less in a given year, they can be deemed bank-qualified, meaning banks that buy them, they get a special tax break for bank-qualified bonds. So by closing or having these bonds settle early 2019, both the bonds we did in the summer and these bonds are bank-qualified. So able to get slightly better rates for the district, which results in obviously long-term savings for interest rate costs. So these are going to be payable beginning September 2019, and it's a nine-year payment period. We structured these around the bonds that we did in the summer. So when we locked in the initial 10 million in the summer, we locked in the longer maturing bonds first in trying to mitigate interest rate risk. And which turned out to be a great move because, as you all know probably, interest rates have gone up since the summer. The reason we're having a first payment date at the end of 2019, at a recent board meeting, you guys set your levy for your Fund 39 or your referendum debt service. With that initial payment, and I'll show you on the next page shortly, we structured it to essentially use up that levy in 2019. So paying off some of the bonds earlier, which again will mitigate some interest rate costs in the long run. The call date, so when these are prepayable is in 2026. That's the same as the bonds we issued during the middle of the summer. So all of your referendum bonds are now callable in 2026. And again, a AA2 rating, again, the same as the bonds that we did in the summer. Great rating for a school district, which allows you to get great interest rates as well. So the last thing, which is maybe the most important, the cost to the district, the interest rate cost, all-inclusive cost. So including all the cost of issuance, your bond council fee, RFPs, everything included, 3.06, which in the grand scheme of things is a great rate. So on the next page is the more detailed financing plan.
Jordan?
Yes.
And that's less than the first, the initial offering, right?
That is less. The main reason for that is that these are amortized shorter. So these are going to be paid off in the first nine years. The first offering, we amortize longer, so the maturities that are going to be due in years nine through 20, essentially. Again, that was to mitigate some of the interest rate risk.
And the second column is what we're paying, or what our payments are?
So the very first column, are you looking at that phase one?
Either one.
The first column is your principal.
Yep.
So that's in the first borrowing, the 10 million, it's slightly less because remember it's a refunding of that short-term loan. But that's the principal payment. The second column is the interest payment.
Okay.
And that's the same for both issues. And you'll see in this phase, there's a bid premium column. I'm sure we talked about it during the summer as well. In the current environment, we sell bonds at a premium, which means, so say for a specific maturity, maybe the interest rate is 2.6, but we have a 4% coupon on it. So you're actually paying a 4% interest rate, but since it's, the real interest rate is 2.6, the buyer's paying a premium upfront. So it generates this premium, which you guys can use to offset some of the interest in the first couple of years. So you'll see as you flow over to the right, the total levy column, your actual levy for 1819 of 2.1 million. We structured the debt to be right up against that. And then essentially leveled that service at roughly 1.3 million for the first nine years. And then leveled 750,000 for the remaining. In the bottom right, I want to point out, shows the difference between where we locked everything in it and what your estimates were leading into the referendum. And you'll see that we came in roughly 2.2 million dollars lower in cost than what we were initially showing the public going into the referendum. And we had a blended rate of roughly 3.9% going into it, and we locked a 3.36% overall, which yes, rates have gone up recently, but these are still incredibly low rates.
So where is the total amount with principal and interest?
So the easiest way to look at it, well, under the total levy, that's going to be your total debt payments, but that's inclusive of the 845 energy projects that you did in 1718. So the easiest way to look at it is that box on the bottom right. Your total referendum cost is 20,970,000 roughly, principal and interest.
So we only borrowed, we only were allowed to referendum with 16.16?
So the 16.16, that's your principal payments. So the 20 million, that's inclusive of the interest that you're going to pay over the 20 years as well. So what you're authorized for is just the principal.
I thought that we were asked this question, and the answer we gave was 16.2 or whatever, 16.16, was all-inclusive, that was the number.
No, so when we were asked that, specifically in public meetings, you know, the question usually came out, well, what is the cost with interest as well? And so that number was, it's going to be 23 million, something like that. But what you ask for from the public and what the referendum question is, is the principal only, 16.16. Now, there have been legislators who want that to change, who would want to come out and say, you should be telling what the total cost is, or it's mandatory for that. But that's not how the question is phrased on referendums. So all these referendums that pass, whether it's 60 million or 100 million at Tulsa, those are principal, those are principal only.
So it's the amount that you can borrow, not the amount of debt that you can pay? Which makes sense, because you have a set project amount, so you know how much you need to borrow for, right? You knew that your projects were 16.16 to get everything accomplished that you needed for the referendum.
So then the other three-point, whatever, budget somewhere along the way?
It's levied for. It's all part of the levy calculation, it's all part of that mill rate. It's already, it's all, it was all baked into our mill rate projections.
Thank you.
Okay.
Lastly, I'll just say that we did attach the rating report on here as well. It essentially just affirms everything that Moody said during the summer.
Okay, any additional questions? All right, then, thank you for your time. And all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, motion carries.
I just got here, so.
Thank you, Jordan.
Okay, thank you, everyone.
Thanks. Thanks, Jordan.
Okay, now we'll move on to discussion and reports. A is 2017-18 school report cards with Lynn.
Good evening.
Good evening.
So we're just going to do just a quick overview of our 2017-18 state school report cards, which were just released last week. And basically in your packets, created an at-a-glance document that has basically the overview information. And then there's a table underneath each page. There's a district page for like the overall district summary, and there's one for each school. Little table underneath the actual data pieces that the state puts out is just a table that I put together just at a quick glance for teachers, for all of us to look at and see where are our increases, where are our decreases. So when we look at our scores overall, scores look good. We're, you know, we've got the exceeds expectations and the significantly exceeds expectations. So we have lots of things to be happy about and celebrate. We also want to celebrate with a little bit of caution in that we have to dig, you know, scratch a little bit more than surface detail to look at, you know, what things are truly, you know, where we're truly doing well and where we are maybe in need of some extra attention. Where we really seem to shine right now is in things like our graduation rates and our closing gaps. And the graduation rates, with both of those, we have to be a little bit careful because there's always some math and some equations and some formulas that are contributing to... I'm not sure that's what it's supposed to look like, but... So we want to make sure that we're understanding the math that's going on behind the scenes. So at a glance for our district, we are concerned right now that we are falling below state averages in a couple of areas. And one of the measures we always hold ourselves to is we always want to stay above that state average mark because a state average is exactly that. It's the average of everybody from lowest to highest. And, you know, that middle mark, we want to stay above that middle mark. We are right now, as a district, we are really below the state average in our district growth in English language arts, and we are below the state average in our district growth in math. So those two things, district-wide are struggling. Once you break them down a little bit more school by school, that, the reason for that becomes a little more apparent. We're looking, when we look from 2016 to 2017, that's the two sides of the table down below. We've got some increases on the left-hand side and some decreases on the right-hand side. So when we look as a district, we did jump in district growth in ELA from 1617 to 1718. We did make a jump in closing gaps, and we'll talk a little bit more about what closing gaps actually means in a bit. We did make a bit of a jump there. And we did make jumps in closing gaps in graduation rates, but there's some strange math there and then on-track and post-secondary readiness. On the right-hand side, district-wide, you can see the decreased scores. Student achievement is just basically achievement scores based on Wisconsin, measuring students against Wisconsin state standards. Student achievement in math went from 38.2 to 36.4, that's out of a 100-point scale. Student achievement in ELA from 38.1 to 36.9. So those are taking decreases right now. The graduation rate, on-track, post-secondary readiness and graduation rate took a decrease, which is interesting because you just looked at the other side that said we are closing gaps in a graduation rate. So we'll talk more about that as well. And then the other decreases, the third-grade ELA achievement score, again, this is district, this is the composites, a bit of a decrease there, and also in the eighth-grade math. So those are the two big indicators of post-secondary readiness is third-grade ELA score, eighth-grade math score, the two of those together. When you start to break that down, on the subsequent pages, the next pages are all by school. So again, the top table is what the state releases, minus all of the details of student demographics. Those are included in the full report cards. If, you know, if you want to see those, those are readily available online. So if we go school by school, the first page you're looking at is Edgerton. And looking at 2016-17 on the left, 2017-18 on the right. The report cards are all set up so that they are measuring student achievement. So these are the indicator areas, student achievement, student growth, closing gaps, on-track, post-secondary readiness, and the bottom little table there on, well, let's look at 2017-18 because they did change from year to year. The priority area weights, take all four of those and determine, based on your school, which area gets which kind of weight. And that's based on your student demographics. So because schools are very diverse, you don't want to measure schools against, exactly against the same category. So you might have, you know, based on your demographics, student achievement, if you look at Edgerton, their percentage weight for the weight that they get in student achievement is 34.2. If you look at Hales Corners, theirs is 33.6, just based on the demographics of their students. So every school in the state really has a little bit of a shift in those priority area weights depending on your population. The student achievement is just the measurement against the state standards. The school growth is how students are growing from year to year. So based on the projected amount of growth, the rate of growth from one year to the next, that's what that score is about. And the closing the gaps are taking all of our student groups, like our subgroups, our economically disadvantaged, our students with disabilities, and measuring whether we are closing the gaps with those students in accordance with our main population areas. So when we look at closing gaps, we have typically high numbers posted throughout the district there. When we get to middle school and high school, we'll talk a little bit about what closing gaps actually means here. So student achievement is looking really, if you look at that score out of 100 points at Edgerton and Hales Corners, if you flip back and forth, we've got some higher rates there in student achievement and school growth, especially compared to the state. When you look at the state averages being in the 60s and these schools are scoring in the mid and upper 80s, we're doing well pretty much across the board there. The areas of concern, Edgerton, you're looking at school growth in math is actually below state average right now. So the growth piece in math, we need to pay attention to. And then the decrease scores down below, student achievement in language arts and student achievement in math. So there's a little bit of a trend happening here with our student achievement scores. Any questions on the elementary? Kind of look at Hales Corners and Edgerton, looking pretty good there. When we get to middle school and high school, we start to have a little bit more concern here as we've been talking about last year and this year when we've been looking at all of our data, really. We're looking at now middle school, and again, 1617 on the left, 2017-18 on the right. And we're looking at areas that are at or below the Wisconsin state average. We're right at the Wisconsin state average, just slightly above on English language arts student achievement. But we're actually below state average in school growth in language arts and school growth in math. So the rate at which students are expected to grow from year to year is behind the state average right now in language arts and math.
As you said, that's a pattern we've seen looking at the data over the last few years.
Yep, yep, yep. And that's the things that we're starting to pay attention to, obviously, but we're also starting to put things in place, like our coaches and our RTI programs and our things now that, you know, we started them last year and this year, we continue to develop those things to pay attention to these because we've seen this trajectory happening now over a couple of years. Increase scores, you can look at the increase on the left from 2016 to 1617 to 1718. Decrease scores, again, are where we're really focusing our attention in our programs and our RTI systems. And we really want to start working with teachers a little bit more heavily on universal instruction, just classroom instruction. We don't want all of this to fall on our response to intervention programs because a lot of this has to do with what happens in the regular classroom. So when we say we're developing those response to intervention programs, we're saying we're going to support students. We also have to really work with our teachers to make sure that we are supporting in the regular classroom as well. And they are not supposed to be separate things necessarily. Closing the gaps on the middle school is actually a very high score. And when we look at the closing the gap score, we think, oh, here's something going well. This is what we've got to be careful with. Because when we talk about closing the gaps, what we don't want to have happening is our main population scores trending down. And we are making some incremental gains with our English language learners and our students with disabilities. Typically, what you want to see is, you know, both of those things going up and then closing the gap this way. Right now, because some of those main scores, those main population scores are falling down, it's almost a false score because we're trending the wrong way here. And so of course, it looks like we're closing the gap faster than the state average, and that's why that score appears to be high, but it's not high for the right reasons just yet. If that makes sense? If that makes sense? Okay, high school is where it also gets to be a little fun. If you look at the overall score from 1617 to 1718, score went up significantly. There's a footnote at the very bottom of this page that explains a little bit about that. And we were very confused by that as well because when you look at student achievement scores and growth scores and, you know, those didn't look to be going up as much as this overall score went up. And what they did here is they put some math in place pertaining to the graduation rate. And if you were closing the gaps in your graduation rate and achieving like a 90% proficiency in some of your subgroups, they automatically awarded you full points for the graduation rate. So they just gave us an automatic jump in that on-track and post-secondary readiness kind of thing. And the graduation rate then gave us like a 96.9 out of 100 points. So that jumped us up overall, those six points. I don't know, you had some conversation about that too.
I did, yeah, it was interesting because I had reached out because I'm like, six points in a school report card is a lot to jump in a year. It really is. Part of it is based on the high school does not have growth scores yet, so they have one less score from which to base the final calculation. But looking at student achievement, it wasn't making sense. And Charlie was the one like, I think there's an error. So they give us the spreadsheets to look at it, and they had this like negative 0.16 for everything. I'm like, okay, that's a spreadsheet error. But if we had it and they used the same spreadsheet, like why isn't every other school looking at it? So that response is actually a direct quote from a response back from DPI. Because I had reached out to a couple other schools, like, are you getting the same thing? Because we're not the only district that has above 90% for graduation rate. And to the best of our knowledge, according to the technical guide, they had made no mathematical calculation formula changes, like they said, we're not touching it this year. While they clearly did, and they had awarded 100% of the points, and we actually decreased our graduation rate. So I want to be very careful on like how these scores are derived. I'm not trying to like put a damper on like, hey, we went up six points, but I want us to be realistic. If you look at the numbers that make that up, we had no control in it. Our actual graduation rate went down from 1617 to 1718, yet they awarded us 50 out of 50 points for graduation. And we did absolutely nothing different, in fact, went down. So I wanted just to be very careful when we look at that, that the scores are what they are, and I want us, you know, the general public looks at these on a site and they look at the final number, which is unfortunate because this tells such a small sliver of the story as we've talked about that redefining ready dashboard, and we need more metrics than just this. And when we're not in control of the calculations that arrived at a report card score, we're really at this, like there's a story that goes with it, right? I mean, we could have went out there and said, woo-hoo, our high school went up six points. We could have, but we didn't because we also know how that was made up. So if you get that question, we just wanted to be very clear that you can look at the numbers individually that make up each of those categories, but...
So what's going on? DPI just arbitrarily decided to adjust some numbers to achieve the math they wanted? Or, because really what they've done is they've muddied the waters and pretty much decreased the usefulness or the clarity of the message.
And I think for those of us who've been doing school report cards since they've come out, that's been the case the whole time. This isn't anything new, this is what's happened this year, it was with this, other years it's been with whatever. And I think the message-
They manipulated to generate the message they want.
I don't know if it's been manipulated in terms of it's not black and white numbers. Like if you would just talk about ACT composite score, you could compare that across the board, right? So two years ago, when we added VARC data, value-added research center on UW-Madison, when they said it's not- when they said it's not fair to compare some affluent communities to other communities based on all of this stuff. So all of a sudden, the mathematical calculations to get to it took into effect some other factors. This is not the first year that the mathematical formulas have had variations on this. And so these school districts having to try to tell the story, unfortunately, either way. And like I said, you know, we talked administratively, we could have spun this however we wanted, but that wouldn't have been the real story. We really want to, we're still continuing to find the data and the metrics that really accurately reflect what it is. And this is only some of the things that we do. So you can see by the work that the principals and Lynn and Amy have brought forward, that there's a lot more data that we're continuing to look at. But this is what the public has to use to rank and value and all of the stuff that people put into it. You know, this doesn't even include AP tests or any of that stuff, so it's very limited in what it is. So we're not trying to, but yeah, we are trying to say like, take it what it is, because it is what it is. But it's always been this way in terms of the mathematical formulas. Last year, they, there was, when the test takers, when, you know, there were districts that their parents could opt out of the test, and you were penalized for that also, right? I mean, every year, there's something. So we just have to be aware of what it is on any given year. And as board members, be able to talk to your constituents if they ask you about it, like, hey, shouldn't you be out there celebrating? Or, hey, you really sucked this year, or whatever it is. You know, there's more to that story than just the bottom line number. It makes it very difficult for all of us in trying to have that simple conversation.
Yeah, I'm pretty sure we've had this discussion before, because I remember talking about, yeah...
Probably about the first year, and then Tony was going to go, he was dead deep into, you know. And it's, to me, it's like the funding formula.
Sure.
You know, they're always tweaking it, and this time it tweaked in our favor.
But the problem is, in data like this, it's comparison data that you use from one year to the next. But it's completely run out of the water when they change the math each year. So it's worse than the, I understand your point with the funding formula, but it's even worse, because we try to glean information from these numbers based on how they, how they trend from, from year to year. And when they, when they change the math each year for whatever excuse suits their fancy, it ruins the comparability of these things.
Well, I think that's why we have to be careful what we're actually pulling out of this and not, you know, putting all of our eggs in that, in this numbers basket. Because it does make it very frustrating if you're really trying to go and say, okay, how did we grow? And then you have to take into account all these different changes. One of the tricky things with the high school is if you look at that priority weights area, there's only three areas in high school right now, because they're not taking into account the school growth piece. And one, and they keep saying that they're close to getting that factored in. So once we have that, I think then it won't be so much pressure on those other three areas. Because right now, you've got a forty percent and a forty percent, a twenty percent, where they're trying to make it equitable between schools without calculating that school growth piece, which is huge.
Yeah, I think the good thing is that you know it, and you've told it to all of us, and we're aware of it, that take it for what it is, but we know what we need to work on, and that there's still room for growth, even though it shows we went up so much.
And the important thing is the trends that we still see. It does corroborate the other data we're seeing through our STAR and our MAP and our ACT. You can still see we've got that struggle in that ELA and even the math growth. And, you know, when you look at closing gaps in ELAs below the state average, but you look in the increase scores for the high school here, closing gaps in ELA, we did increase. So we're making some gains, but we're still behind. But it's, we just got to figure out how all this data actually works together and what are the valuable pieces that we pull out and get working in our favor as a system.
And John, on top of it, it went from the WKCE to the Badger exam to the Forwarding exam. On top of this, so the exams are...
They change a bunch of stuff every year, which really makes it very difficult to get any clear comparison from year to year. Makes you wonder what they're going to do next year and how they're going to explain it.
So we're trying to create some internal metrics, as you've been starting to see things that are less, that are more reliable and not adding some mathematical formulas on top of it, to try to look at that. I mean, it's not perfect, but...
And that's what those little subtables are, just looking at, you know, where are we at or below state average? Where are we increasing? Where are we decreasing? Because those you can, for the most part, except for that weird graduation thing, you can take those from year to year, looking at our student achievement.
Any other questions?
Well, I'm very proud of everybody, because I'd rather be going up than going down. No matter how you make the sausage, there's the end product, in my opinion. Because if someone wants to buy a house in this district, that's the first place they look. And they don't look at all what you just talked about. That's the bottom line to me. Yes, we know what's going on here, but to the public, it's very important. So thank you. And all staff, and the parents, and the teachers, and the kids. Because I think if we were trending the other way, I think the discussion might be a little different.
Problem is, we are trending, it sounds like in some areas we are trending the other way, and yet the change in math makes it look otherwise.
Well, yeah, but there's more good than bad, at least from what I saw. Of course, we've got work to do. That's, yeah.
And what's nice is we, before this came out, we've identified the areas that we need to work on. We've already have plans in place to address them, so. All right, thank you, Lynn. Okay, on to B, legislative advocacy. At least on Quinzel, if you remember, was it the last meeting or?
Uh, yes.
One of the most recent meetings, we started discussing legislative advocacy options. We're looking today at some different priorities, and we'll have a discussion about that and go from there.
This, this we put together at a meeting. We broke off into subgroups and these are superintendents and school board members and came up with all these different priorities. And this is how they shaped out with the top priorities to the bottom six. And these are, they're not general, they're pretty specific.
And again, this is from the Southeastern Wisconsin Schools Alliance, or the SWSA.
So this was giving direction to our SWSA board and our director as to what we think is important and our lobbyist to try and... So when these things come up, we know where we're at, this is what we want.
Absolutely.
And I think it's important to say that, you know, each district is put together differently. We may not agree with number four, or whatever it may be, because it might affect us as a district. But as a whole, that's what came up.
Okay, does anyone have any thoughts on the six priorities listed here?
I did include in your board packet a copy of what Greendale has on their website, just to see how they've taken it and made it their individual district, just as an example of how another district close to us takes this and sort of makes it their own statements. And I guess, you know, to the point why it was brought up is typically when you get into, and this year will be one of those, and we'll have some probably more interesting twists and turns in it as we look at the changes coming ahead. Often, the laws that get presented to us have a very quick turnaround on it. And in terms of, a lot of times, we'll even get a legislator that'll reach out and ask for our input on it. And depending upon if we've identified it locally as a priority or not, sometimes if we feel very strongly about something, the board itself might pass a resolution. And so the timing of it, sometimes we don't have a whole month before we can act on it. We have to act very quickly, sometimes it can be a quick response to an email. But if the board has identified some priorities and say, yes, we agree with that, that that's a concern, then we can collectively have some confidence that, you know, if a legislator reached out and said, hey, are you in favor of this? Should I support that? Or what is some information in terms of your district, how does it impact it? And a lot of times, if that happens to do with some fiscal impacts, we'll ask, for example, fund balance was an issue a few years ago back in terms of what local school districts were having. That was some information that could be gathered, and then we shared with them, like, what was the, what was the impact and why we needed to do that. So it was some, a learning opportunity for some legislators, because remember, public education is just one of the things that they have to cast laws on. And so their level of expertise in this area is limited. So they were very unaware that it allows us to short-term borrow. Some of them were unaware that school districts have to short-term borrow because of when the funds are distributed from the state. So I guess one of the thoughts is looking at this advocacy framework or some of these priorities. If there is some information about any of these that you feel like as a board you'd like more information, because you don't know enough if we should advocate, for example, I'm just going to grab priority four. So develop, attract, and train high-quality educators, if you're like, is that something that should be a priority? Clearly, the Southeastern Wisconsin felt it was a priority to advocate for. If you're like, I don't know enough about that, what is the history of it? Is there a shortage of teachers? Is there, what does that mean? It could mean that we bring back some information or share it with you, so you at least are more informed around that. So when it does come time to either advocate for or against it, at least it builds your capacity around some of what are already identified as high-priority issues in Southeastern Wisconsin by school districts right now. That could also be right now, the whole state support. If you're unclear about what special education funding looks like right now, because it's not at the state, the state two-thirds funding, if you're not sure what that phrase means, like, we can come back and provide the board some information on, like, I need some more background on that. Because if you're like, I don't feel comfortable advocating for it or not, maybe it's just like, hey, then if these are priorities, like, we could spend some time at upcoming board meetings to just get enough information, so you're like, oh, and how does that impact us at Whitman? No, is that a, you know, like, are we really, is that a concern for us, a high priority? You know, we just talked about school report cards, right? Legislative a priority five, that is what that's referring to, of having a very transparent way of looking school district to school district, especially if it's publicly funded. What are we looking at to compare it? And we all agree that the current report cards are not doing that. Remember, part of that was mandated by legislators, that was not developed by DPI. That state report card was mandated by lawmakers, not DPI. DPI did not come up with the idea of report cards. So if there's any of these items or looking at something else that you're like, hey, is that a priority we would advocate for? We know in the last session, referendum, referenda, continue to come up. There are legislators that want to limit, you know, the number of times you can go to your local taxpayers for asking for that. You know, we happen to be in a position that we just passed one, so it might be less of an urgency to us now as it would have been maybe a year or two ago, should have that risen to the top. Does that mean that we wouldn't or support that or whatever? So these are just conversation points about, you know, where, where do you feel like you need some more information on? Or like, I really would struggle supporting this or not supporting that? Because when they start, when the laws start to come out, and we know that the trend has been to include laws within the biennial budget. That has never been the process before, the budget was typically the budget. But how the budget is being able to get passed in part of that process, you know, in the wee hours of the morning in Madison, laws get put into the actual budget bill. And so we've got to be sort of on top of that, and they come very fast and furious. And the awareness of that is like, whoa, we don't have a lot of time to react. So now is the time, as we're getting ourselves set up for the spring, of like, what information would we like to see here to have some, just keep it in front of us as we start to enter that season, instead of like, oh, my gosh, I have no idea what that means, before we're like feeling pressure to make a decision, or I don't know, do we support that, do we not support that?
So we probably ought to start talking about them.
Sure, sure.
So I have a couple of questions, anybody else before I? All right. I'm just randomly start on one of them here. Am I on? Is this live? Just kidding. Preserve, maintain local control of public schools and advocate for no future unfunded mandates on public education. Can I get an example of a, of an unfunded mandate on public education?
Yep, I can give you one. Act fifty-nine, which is academic and career plans, that got passed in the last biennial budget. They now mandate that every school grade six through twelve have academic and career plans for students in each of those grades. There were no dollars attached to that.
And it's going to cost money to do that.
Well, we have to implement time and resources and people and all of this stuff. That would be a simple example.
Sounds like those kind of things probably happen every single year.
Lots of them happen.
Multiples, yeah, okay. Yeah, I could, not by anybody else, but I could support, it's like, hey, you're going to throw additional requirements on us, you know, that's going to cost us resources, we need funded for the resources. I'm assuming that when things like number two, increased state support, and number three, increased support, support means money? Or does it mean just like mentally, we're going to support you with whatever efforts we can on that? Because number two is increased state support for most vulnerable, underrepresented and high-need populations, including students with disabilities, English language learners, and children in high poverty. So does that mean increased state money for those things?
Often, so with these priorities, I've attached each eight-page document that goes with them. So there's a page on each of the priorities that help further elaborate what each of them are. So maybe that provides a little bit more explanation in terms of the details.
I'm sorry, I didn't see that here. Is that here somewhere? Oh, oh, that's that document, okay, yeah, I had that open.
And the reason I did is because it's in draft form from SWSA. And so when I talked to the director, she's like, hey, if you just, you can put this, but we're still like, we haven't like taken a final motion on it. So most of the time, I mean, it means resources. It could also mean that in cases of mental health, that our ability to use community resources becomes more available. But it usually means money, or staffing, or support from local agencies, which... Yeah, it could be ceases.
So, yeah, with the past twenty years, funding for special education continued to decrease. Yeah, so they're talking money, which is what I expected. The concern I have on that is, it seems that, and I love the way they, that things get worded, because, you know, like in, like in number three, increased support to ensure adequate resource available for Wisconsin children to succeed. What are you going to say? No, I don't want them to succeed? But you have to, you have to look at, at, at how they want to do that. And, I mean, there's, there's tons of examples out there, how just throwing money at something doesn't, doesn't support success. I mean, look at some of the most expensive districts, as in money spent per student in the state are some of the most underperforming districts out there. So, yeah, I want, I want all the kids to succeed, but the answer isn't necessarily throwing money at it. Probably in many cases, isn't throwing money at it, it's what you're doing with the money and how you're doing it. So I guess it really depends on how they want to increase the state support. Guide those districts more in how they're spending their money, or just throw money at them? I mean, there's a lot of guy, a lot of legislators want to feel great about voting for, I threw this, I voted to spend this many more millions of dollars on such and such. But that doesn't mean that good things happen from it.
Well, if you look at number two...
I started with number two.
Okay, so that, that has to do with private schools, private, private schools get ninety-seven percent of their money for a...
Special education.
Special education, and we're at sixteen or twenty-two?
We get category of twenty-six percent.
Okay, so why is that? So they could redistribute the money, it may not be new money.
Yeah.
And redistribute the money. And that's another factor that, and Lisa alluded to, some of these things may not be for our district.
Yeah, right.
Maybe they are. So we have to advocate what's best, and that goes down to number six, is local control. We have to advocate for what's best for our district, and I think, and what's, and, yeah.
So in some cases, though, depending on the district, increasing support may be giving them more management or whatever guidance. On the other hand, now you're, now you're advocating sticking your fingers in, the DPI sticking their fingers in somebody else's show, you know what I mean? So...
And just to be clear, John, it's, it's not DPI, it's lawmakers. DPI reinforces it. I just want to be, yeah.
But it does, but I mean, lawmakers make the laws, DPI has to follow.
Has to follow them, so I just want to be careful that it's...
So that's what I'm talking about, is it may require DPI to start sticking their fingers into somebody else's, into somebody's district. But maybe that's the answer in some districts, you know? And maybe money is the answer in other districts that are being very effective with their money, efficient with the money, but still need, you know, could use more to, to improve these programs. But other districts may have more money than they need on the programs, and they're just spending it horribly, I don't know. So to be able to, just those two examples, two and three, to just be able to say, I would support anything that, that increase states, that increase support or increase state support to blah, 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 it depends on how they're going to increase the support and, and it depends on what the proposal is.
So that's why, in terms of legislative priorities, because they aren't actually laws in front of us. We're having to go on, we're just trying to say the concept, the philosophy we would. But depending upon, there could be two competing lawmakers who give, who would try to address that and have very different bills.
Different ways, absolutely.
We would then look at it, but if we know that that's something that we strongly support, and that's an issue for us here, you know, I think when we increased to social workers, right, there was some conversations about the state providing funding. And we decided regardless of they do that or not, that was a priority for us enough here, local... And we decided regardless of they do that or not, that was a priority for us enough here locally that we felt the need to do that. We didn't say only if the state gives us more funding. So we, we always will do that, but we did feel, I mean, at that time, we, we didn't have anything out in front of us. But we sort of decided that at a couple of meetings, that it was enough of a priority. But having that out in front of us, that that's a priority like this would have said, we're going to look at any law to see, to make sure it doesn't negatively or detrimentally impact us in a way, either fiscally or whatever. Because we always are going to take a look at it from Whitnell School District lens.
Yeah, I mean, I would hope so.
Yeah.
I, I found number five interesting, provide taxpayers the transparent and valid accountability system for all publicly funded schools. Don't they already try that?
This is what, this is, when I saw that one on there, that was one I'd like to see moved up in a higher priority. Shouldn't have to take Mike's two-part class to understand how school finance works.
That's what I'm getting at. They, they, they may think that.
No, that, yeah, it's.
It, this is, so you have choice schools, you have vouchers that are getting money that don't have to report, that don't go in a report card, that are private schools, but we are playing by different rules.
Yeah. Well, that's, I just found that, I guess I found it a little bit amusing, that, that we would have to have that support thing. Because of all the work that goes into, you know, all this public information and, and you're putting out there is provide taxpayers transparent and valid accountability, it's because it's poor. They put all this stuff out there and the, the transparency and accountability is still poor. So, yeah, why would, I, I'd support that.
Well, he's saying that choice schools and voucher programs don't have to report what public schools do.
And get publicly funded money.
Right, and I'm saying that I can support number five. And number five is saying to, I mean, if you support number five, then you're supporting a more transparent and valid accountability system for publicly funded schools, aren't you?
For all publicly.
All publicly, I mean.
Not just public schools.
All publicly funded schools, yeah. I mean, why would you, I would support that. I mean, you should be as transparent as possible where people's money is going.
Well, now you don't have to.
Isn't that sad?
Correct, correct. And I think that's why they're saying it's a priority in terms of.
I agree.
And another one that didn't make this list is mandatory start date. Well, the bottom line is the gentleman that leads the committee, Lewis Olson, the Education Committee, lives in a, in a entertainment district. That his constituents say no. So he's not even going to bring it to vote, right?
Right. That doesn't mean that it couldn't be a local priority for us, because that is a local control issue. And that, and that will be, you'll see that, I think, in, you know, some of the other districts they made up.
I thought it was a DPI controlled issue, or at least.
The law against.
Yeah, but, but that state law sets it for the state, not for, not for a smaller area.
Correct, but it could be one of our local priorities to advocate for that, even if it's not. You see what I'm saying?
If, if it doesn't make the SWSA list.
Doesn't mean it couldn't be one of Whitnell's priorities, correct.
I think we need to maybe make that one of our priorities.
Yep, that's, that's a good example of something that, based on this, the whole group felt that they could only have so many priorities. Otherwise you don't have priorities. It's a laundry list of things. So are there any things on here that you feel like as board members would be helpful to have just a little bit more background information that we can share with you, like how something works? Whether it's the law or how it works at Whitnell, so you have more information? And I guess you don't have to answer right now, but, you know, I just was using, for example, priority four. We've been meeting with the Milwaukee Deans, the School of Education Deans, to talk about how do we create a pipeline of teachers? Because of the short, it's a shortage of workers overall, but how do we create the shortage of the pipeline for teachers? So maybe having, I don't know, maybe you're okay with it and recognize that there's a shortage and just say, I could support that regardless, or maybe you'd like more information to figure out like specifically where is that falling apart? I, I'm, I'm just trying to provide you with whatever information would help you be more well-versed in any of the topics that you would see here, or additional topics you feel like you'd like to see as priorities. Again, this isn't an action item. It's only a discussion item for tonight.
The one thing I don't want is, and I'm thankful, thank you for getting the Greendale ones, is that, you know, we believe in this. We, that's great, but you just can't put on the webpage and not do anything about it. So if we do believe in something, when the time comes to advocate, we have to advocate it. And, you know, and maybe with the new governor, maybe it'll just be a financial budget. It won't be legislation inserted into the budget. We don't know that.
It will definitely be a, a unique process to predict. I mean, it's all, you can't predict it regardless, because there's so many things that are there. But, yeah, I think it, it just adds a different twist this year, trying to figure out how or what or where it is, but.
Okay, so we, we've had some information, right? You've got all the details. If you haven't reviewed it before today, got some time to review it before the next meeting. What my suggestion would be is if you think of other things that may be a priority or something you'd consider, email it to, to Lisa, Quinn and me. We'll try to compile it and we can send it out to all board members before the next meeting to get you to start thinking about potential other ideas. And then we'll work on putting together some sort of framework at the next meeting with the, the goal to vote on the second meeting in December. Does that sound reasonable to everyone?
To vote for what?
On, on our, on our priorities.
Our local.
Our own priorities. Correct, our priorities, not just ours.
But if you like theirs, they could, like, that's what I'm just saying, correct.
Yeah, but we'd be voting on ours.
Okay. When are the two meetings in December?
Tenth and the seventeenth.
Two in a row, okay.
So again, if you think of any, like we've got, we just talked about possibility, excuse me, adding flexibility for school start date, right? We'll list that as a potential one. If you think of any, please email it ahead of time so we can do any research or whatever we need to get it out to board members, so they can start thinking about it, okay?
I wonder if we could get the ones that didn't make the list, you know, didn't make it.
Yeah, but, yeah.
They'd be good.
Be good to look at.
And I don't know if you guys, you know, we're, you're right.
For Whitnell specifically, if we're talking about financial things, not having the referendum, the debt payment costs go towards our expenditures and thus hit our state aid would be a great thing to advocate for. So if you, if you would even just look at the thing that Jordan brought in from there, that state aid impact on page three, in which it shows how much state aid would be declining in each of those years, based on our aid payments. You have a community that says, yes, we're going to support you with these extra dollars. And then the state goes ahead and also takes away state aid as well. It doesn't make a lot of sense. And so I know that's been floated around. It would be a great thing specifically for Whitnell from a financial standpoint and really help the taxpayers in our community as well.
By all means, any staff, administration, you're working with it every day, so you have better grasp on it than we do.
Yeah, I'd like to hear what, what you guys think we should.
Yeah, we did, we'd had a conversation today at a director meeting and have it on our admin team meeting to just think about what are some things that are impacting them? Like even the unfunded mandates thing, like what are some things that we just are compelled to do, but we don't think are really adding value? Because they're just compliance issues, that if we had more flexibility, could actually do a better job of some things, so.
Okay. All right, any other questions or comments? Okay, thank you. Move on to C, unusually hazardous transportation zones.
I tried to give you a fairly good breakdown of kind of what I've come across this, this year so far as regarding to our unusually hazardous areas. And so bringing it to the board to kind of maybe get some background as well, as far as what you have been a part of in the past as well. So what has been interesting this year is we've had a few different requests to look at some different areas of our district, either for a second look or to kind of look at an area and say, I, I think this is hazardous from our, from our community, from our parents, for example. One of them would be Highway one hundred, right? So this year we have major construction happening on Highway one hundred. Didn't make a lot of sense to, to have any students try to cross and navigate that regardless of age. And so kind of late in August, we're like, oh, we better be, you know, transporting those, those students. And so in, 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 what would typically happen in that situation is, is we would say that that's going to be a hazardous area. We probably need the board to approve that at some point. We should do, and this is all information I'm kind of getting to as far as my conversations with DPI. The board would approve that as a hazardous area. We would send that information off to DPI with a reason as to why there's construction. DPI would document that that is a hazardous area. And now we would also receive funding based on those students who are within two miles and in a hazardous area. If, if DPI doesn't have it documented as a hazardous area and we count them as students that we're transporting, you're not supposed to get any aid for that, right? They have to be actually with, if they're within two miles, you're not supposed to get any aid for those students unless they are in an unusually hazardous area. And this would fly as an unusually hazardous area. As I talked to local law enforcement, they're like, we could do a study of it. But I'm telling you right now, it's hazardous. So just go ahead. Don't, don't, you know, you have to wait. Let's just do this. So as, as areas have come up this year, to say, hey, could you take another look at this particular area or that particular area? In my past experiences, what I've done is looked at what were the studies done to come up with the hazardous areas? So we've got a list on our website, right, of, of these certain areas within a two-mile, within a two-mile range that are hazardous. And usually, police reports accompany that. We, I, I couldn't find any of those in our, in our district office anywhere. And so I first reached out to Milwaukee Sheriff's Department and they didn't have any. And then I reached out to DPI. And DPI was the most enlightening as, as far as what information they do have. And so here's the bottom line is there, there have been, our last unusual hazardous transportation plan was approved by DPI in nineteen ninety-four. So there may have been changes since then that the board has approved as far as an unusually hazardous area. It may have been added to an internal list and put into board policy, but DPI certainly wasn't aware of that.
So they never followed through.
So in, there was some communications back and forth, which I was really impressed with the person at DPI who was talking to. She was very, very helpful. She had old emails, which I'm like, this is awesome. So she had some emails going back and forth in two thousand and eight, which had our entire plan. And DPI said, why is this hazardous? This was the communication back and forth, why are these areas hazardous? Because all listed was the area and no reasons or rationale or anything like that, or no accompanying police reports or traffic studies. And then that's where the conversation just stopped. Then there was another communication in twenty fifteen. There, and, and we do have a police report for some area that was studied in twenty fifteen, in which again DPI said to an employee here, there's no reason as to why all these areas are, you, you need to tell us this for this to be an approved plan. And that's where the communication stopped, so.
Is there a Grange area?
There's a number of areas.
There's probably lots of areas.
There's lots of areas. There's A through whatever, right? Some areas, for example, are areas that may no longer be hazardous. The Grange example, there, there might be a sidewalk there now, or there weren't sidewalks there then, and there may be now. In other words, what we're starting to unpeel is maybe a long and winding road of what we need, huh, road, of what we need to do to get our has, unusually hazardous plan up to date and approved by, by DPI. So that A, there's lots of reasons that I put out there. A, so the funding is legal.
So we can fund it the way we should be funded.
So we're funded the way that we should be funded, that we've been being funded for. Two, parents deserve to know what areas are and are not hazardous, based on a certain set of criteria that really we can set up, but that needs to be signed off by somebody. Three, if things change, there's reasons as to why we're either adding area to be hazardous or taking an area off and that the community can know, well, jeez, I never knew that that area may not be hazardous in the future, that there's some sort of criteria that we have in place to, to do that, and all for the sake of safety. But also following through on, on, you know, really what the board wants to approve. So how this process works at this point in time is, right now, I've kind of been, as, as parents have requested areas to be looked at, I was going off the assumption that those areas have been looked at in the past. And that may or may not have been the case. It may have just been a board action that occurred. That we really want to have the Sheriff's Department to look at those areas as they, that we currently have listed and to really do a study of the area. You, you can also have the board simply, we, we can come up with our plan, which we have, I don't know why, the plan we have, and actually attach some criteria to these areas, right? And, and to say, well, this doesn't have a sidewalk, or there's a lot of traffic, or, and not any one situation means it's necessarily hazardous. Because there's not a sidewalk, there's three cars that go down that street the entire day, that doesn't mean it's hazardous. Or I should say unusually hazard. In fact, DPI does, or the law does a nice job of saying every area is, there's hazards no matter where you are, what is an unusual hazard? So we can have our areas right now, as they're currently set up. We can show it to the Sheriff's Department and they don't have to study each and every area. They can simply say, yes, we agree with this plan. We'd send it off to DPI with our reasons as to why these certain areas are, are hazardous and, and see what DPI says, whether they accept the plan or not. However, we probably want to do a fairly comprehensive traffic study for, for these partic, for, for many of these areas to get some sort of weight behind why these areas are hazardous, or specifically maybe why they aren't anymore as well. Which we wouldn't, we would give parents leeway into saying why this particular, they're not going to shut off transportation tomorrow. But it would be a, hey, a heads up, this area now has a sidewalk that it didn't have in nineteen seventy-seven, when this was first approved. We probably want to take a look at this again. And so it would be a pretty extensive communication to our community, specifically within a two-mile radius, go door to door. And put out as to what our intentions are to re-study these particular areas, to be prepared that as a board and as a, and a budgetary thing, that there could be areas added on to the study that, that Sheriff's Department may say this has now become hazardous. But that we would also want to be prepared that there could be areas that could be coming off, because they are no longer hazardous. We'd be wanting to plan forward for that for, with our community.
So you, you hit on a concern I have right at the end there. Because for most of what you were talking about, you're talking about taking a look at the areas that we have identified as hazardous.
Yeah.
And either getting them validated as hazardous or having them come off the list, because maybe now there's a sidewalk or something like that. And, and you also talked about areas that, that parents have currently complained about. But only at the very end did you mention something about, about areas that need to come on. So the question is, how do we capture the areas that people haven't complained about and maybe have to become hazardous in the last fifteen, twenty years, or thirty years, forty years? Because I know in the last twenty years, they've redone Janesville Road, they're right now doing, and widened it. They're right now doing Highway one hundred, as we all know. All those things are well within two miles of, of properties in the district. So we need to somehow, with whatever it is we do, we, it needs to be comprehensive enough to identify areas that are now hazardous, that nobody has complained about and that aren't already on the list.
So the one thing that Mike, I, I can't, I, I didn't recall him saying it, but back in two thousand and eight in that communication that we saw between the employee and DPI, and why it never got approved, was that the district that's, the, the district submitted plan to DPI at that time didn't include criteria. So the criteria has to lead off and not deviate from whatever that criteria is. And the state statute provides suggested criteria. That seems like a basic thing that we should do, so you don't deviate too much from that. And that's the same thing from the Sheriff's Department, when they look at it, that's the same criteria that they would recommend or look at it. So I think that that's, that's the part of it that we have to look at and then go from there. And the comprehensive traffic study is how we, they do literally the entire area. And I think there's a neighboring school district that's also going through that same comprehensive.
Oak Creek Franklin did the same thing, or are in the midst of it. And, and it takes a long time. So in the particular situation in which we are trying to do a traffic study right now for an area, we requested this back in September. There, we're first getting into it in mid-November, and then we got an email the week of mid-Novem, two weeks ago, that they can't do it now until mid-December. I mean, these, these take a long time, as you can imagine. The Sheriff's Department has other things to, to do. Yeah, it takes a long time to go through this process, but it's certainly worth doing.
But I assume the idea is we're doing the entirety of the two miles around the whole city.
It's not just the parts that we've discussed or haven't discussed, or whatever. It's going to be the entire thing so that we're back up to date finally.
Though I'm pretty sure in the past, we were told some of this was going to happen and it just never happened. So, not from anyone up here.
Yeah, I think, I think.
I'd like Mike.
Yeah, I, I don't know. But, but there's certainly, there's certainly, the, the criterions would be, obviously, one of the criterias that has been a big thing, just from the plan itself, from, from previous boards, has been age of the student, right? I, I mean, it's clear from our transportation. I, I mean, it's clear from our transportation plan, when there's no high school students included in that, that age of student, and that's one of the things that, um, is suggested. Lack of sidewalks, lack of crossing, all these things together, ultimately, it is a board decision. For example, I'm just letting you know that the Sheriff's Department come back and say, this is the most hazardous area in the state of Wisconsin. The board could come back and say, we're not transporting. Now, is that a smart thing to do? Probably not, because somebody will probably, um, somebody would probably appeal it and, and DPI would say, clearly, this is the ci- this is the most dangerous part in, in all of Wisconsin. You need to be either addressing these issues, like putting in a sidewalk or whatever, or transporting. And then we would lose that appeal. So there has to be obviously some weight put on to what we get back from Sheriff's Department. And that's why we kind of request that those studies be done.
But that affects our funding for transportation too, right? So if there's a traffic study indicating that this is the most hazardous place in the state.
Yep.
In your example, and then, uh, and so we, well, jeez, I guess we better.
Yeah.
Transport.
Yep.
That, I mean, if all the I's are dotted and T's are crossed, then we should be getting additional funding for that.
And I don't want to overst- I don't want to overstate the funding here.
Yeah.
I'm, I'm just, I don't know.
Yes, yeah.
There could be areas that would come off the list.
Yes.
Correct.
Sure.
There, there more than likely is at least a couple. There's more than likely a couple.
So going forward, what does the maintenance of this look like? There's no question this needs to be get done and get cleaned up, absolutely, no argument on that.
Yeah.
But going forward, some things are easy to spot. If you're going to take something off the list and the reason that it was on the list was construction, so two years Highway one hundred construction is done complete and it's beautiful, it's easy to take that one off the list because the reason no longer is there. But if age of student is a criteria and if there is a section in the district that was deemed hazardous because there was a group of families that had a cluster of kids that were moving up together and then they graduate out of that age group, then how often do we need to redo the traffic study from the Sheriff's Department? How often do we have to do a traffic out? How often do we have to check the age of the students? How often do we have to look at these criteria to maintain this, to take it off?
So I would say there's a couple of things to think about. One would be simply us understanding the area.
Sure.
Knowing are there changes happening, right? That would be to the board, to the community, to parents, to, to administrators, to understand our community and know where these changes are happening. You're absolutely right, when Highway one hundred gets done, one of the first things I'm, you're going to have to do as, as stewards of resources and, and all those things is have another study of that area done now. Because the widening of the lanes and more sidewalks and more lights and it might not be a hazard to anybody. I, I don't know that.
Cars go fast.
They do, they do, I, I'm just saying.
Traffic out and the speed increase.
There's a number of things.
The sheer volume of traffic.
But.
You're right, study.
Yep, that's what the study would be, would be there for. Could there be something in place where you're going, I, I don't think it needs to be annual. Do you need to be aware of what's happening? Yes. Does it need to be sooner than nineteen seventy-seven?
Yes.
Till now, yes. Uh, Brian, thank you for acknowledging also, yep, it has to be sooner than that. Uh, it's, it's understanding your, your community and, and, and understanding where changes are happening or where additional things are happening. Students moving through doesn't necessarily, i- i- if an area is hazardous K through eight and, and students graduate out of that range, it's no longer hazardous. It's probably a yearly communication to our parents to say, don't forget to check whether you still qualify for free transportation based on, um, our unusually hazardous transportation. We get that every year in, in my kid's school district, um, to say, hey, your kid just moved from middle school to high school. You might want to check to make sure you still qualify for busing or things like that. We still allow for parents to pay for the busing no matter where they are, as long as the route isn't significantly changed, as long as, um, it's not a stop that is going to, you know, add, add amounts of time. That option's always out there for parents to fit within that. Yes, it costs, but that's, you know, part of what the state law acc- accounts for. We spend five hundred and eighty thousand dollars on, on transportation, we get twenty-three thousand in funding. A bus is thirty-six thousand dollars a year approximately. Uh, and we, and that also goes towards, um, our private school transportation as well. We are required to transport or at least fund, um, private school transportation. We do that for Saint Mary's, in which they do a full bus. We do that for Hales Corners, Lutheran, in which they have a full bus that costs us approximately th- they, sorry, they have eleven kids on a full bus that costs us thirty-six thousand dollars. We have Hales Corners, um.
You're talking about Saint Jacobi?
Saint Jacobi, Saint Jacobi has three students. And we have a bus that goes out there to do those three students, to pick up those three students and costs us twenty thousand dollars. So I mean, transportation is not cheap.
Plus, if the student goes outside the district within five miles, we have to pay.
To a private school, yes, within, within that we have to. So there's some costs.
So the study may have to include, you know, those kids and where they're being taken to, because maybe that's not a.
No, but they're on the bus.
They, they still fall within, if they're within two miles of their private school, it's not hazardous.
That's what I'm saying.
We don't bus them either.
That's what I'm saying.
So what does it cost to get a traffic study done with the Sheriff's Department?
Zero.
So that's a help.
It's, it's just time.
Time.
It's just time.
So I would, I would ask you, it's not the board's purview to set up your procedures, it's not our job. But from, based on what you're telling me and my gut tells me every three years is probably a reasonable review.
And I, and I think what DPI suggested is just give them your plan with your criteria and have them sign off on it. If they want to go check particular areas, that's certainly, they're in their purview to do, but it's, now that we're starting at the base, yes, it might be good to just say, it might take six months, but let's look at each of these areas. From there on out, it is, hey, Milwaukee County Sheriff's, take a look at our plan, it's been three years, it was still kind of good, and send it off to DPI and just get it.
Or we may need to look at a particular area, uh, if they start a new apartment complex.
Correct.
Or if, uh, they widen Janesville Road again or, you know, change the speed limit.
So I think part of it is, we'll go ahead and move forward with, and putting in that, but in the meantime, we have had a couple of parent requests individually and are not comfortable asking just for a study, just for.
Yeah, it's kind of like, if, if we don't know that this whole plan is right, why are we picking only because there's some, you know, requests that maybe this should be a more comprehensive thing than what, than what we're doing right now based on the information DPI has.
So we'll communicate to the two parents who put in requests that we're, we're going to do a much larger one, which will include the areas that they requested, but it's not that we're not being unresponsive, but we're not just cherry picking.
So in the meantime, we're going to charge them for.
Yeah, with the one particular, yeah, with the one particular, um, one particular family, I said, hey, if you're requesting this to be looked at, yes, we will charge you. If it ends up being a hazardous area, we will refund those dollars.
Okay.
But we know that this has been a topic of parents in the past coming to board members about that. I just want you to completely understand, to have questions in terms of that, but.
And this, this will be an action item, actually. This will come back to the board as a comprehensive plan that the board needs to approve and that's what kicks it off to DPI.
So when they do these studies, is there any look into the future, kind of like the development going on in Edgerton? Are they, can they look into the future and say, this will be at some point?
Uh, I, I guess it depends maybe on the officer, the deputy who, who's doing it, how future forward they want to look, they, they might. So for example, with the Highway one hundred discussion, he said, yes, right now it's absolutely hazardous. You probably want to get a study done when it's over though, and to, to relook at it. So there may be notes in the study that say, as of right now, no, what could change that in the future, this, this, and this, if, if these things occur. It depends how comprehensive the deputy wants to be with the study that they do.
Stephen, that's a great point because, um, as we've met with that developer, right now it's in litigation between the two municipalities, but as that continues through, that, um, developer will be doing a traffic study in addition to it and so has informed us of that. So that would be an example of the potential of having an impact and just us being aware of it. So sometimes the municipality requires them to do a traffic study in addition to approving their plans. But, so we're, we've been monitoring that, it, we have no idea, neither of the municipalities knows where it is in the appeal process right now. But that would be something that would have an impact and that we're aware of, that would cause us, if they didn't do it, clearly for us to do that.
And we can adopt their traffic study.
Because it'd be, yeah, they're getting it from the Sheriff's Department. They, and, and they would, yeah, so all of that would be the same process that we would go through and then we'd have to adapt it and clearly that, that's one that would specifically have some significant impacts on us.
I hope they look at that before they approve plans, because otherwise what's the point?
I mean, that's part of the litigation with some.
Before they approve developers' plans.
Okay. All right, thank you. So we'll move on to six D sponsorship policies.
I guess I, my name's on it.
It is.
So this is.
It is on there.
So we, um, this is part of what Dave Pentac brought forward before, and so there are a couple of things you'll see in your packet. We decided that it makes sense to start with a board level policy related to sponsorship before we got into the details of tiers and costs and all of that stuff. And so Kathy pulled together a couple of samples, um, of, of school districts that also use Neola. So you'll see Mesquitos is in there as a sample, they've actually developed a separate board policy on sponsorship. And then you see Maguano in there, who has actually just added it to their advertising. So two different approaches to it. Um, we also included, although this is not what we're approving on, just so you could see how Maguano then has a whole separate document related to the sponsorship and tiers. So you can see what's included at the board level policy and then what would be included in the details. So all the stuff you see in that accompanying document is the stuff that Dave will be bringing forward and working through that. But realize that we probably should have a board policy that talks about sponsorship, whether it's part of the advertising or whether it's separate, that's a discussion the board here can have, but we just gave you some samples of what that includes and to delineate the differences between donation, sponsorship, is there an exchange of something in one of those versus a free will? I mean, just to clarify the definition between donation, sponsorship, and advertising, right? I think we just need to be very clear on the terms where if people expect something in return or designated, undesignedated, all of that stuff in terms of that. So that's really what the conversation is tonight, this is not, it's a discussion, it's not in terms of that. But if the board, now that you've seen a couple of examples, that was the ask of us to come back with some samples. Um, and so if there's a preference, if there's whatever it is, and then once we have that, Dave will continue with the work that he did. Um, last board meeting, he, there was a memo that was shared with you in terms of what that sign would look like. Um, and so we're continuing to look at it, we're trying to just, um, pick things apart because it came, and there was a lot of, a lot of questions that came up with all of that, so.
So obviously Neola's okay with how they paced these.
Yep. Either one of those, it really says that's a district preference how you'd want to do it. And I'm guessing because Mesquito had a referendum and had some significant sponsorships, in that referendum, they felt it important to have its own policy, so it really stood out. Maguano, not so much, they embedded it within there, just said, hey, we don't need any more, we can embed it. So that's just a preference, that's a local preference, there's not one way over the other.
Does Neola still guarantee that policy?
Yep, either one of those are fine, yep, yep.
So let's start with that basic, would, are people more comfortable with building it into our existing policy or creating a standalone policy?
Do you, so do you think that volume dictated Mesquitos?
I do, and because of the referendum process that it went through, that it was significant in terms of, because that wasn't, some of the sponsorships they got was not in a tier thing, clearly. Um, their, their football field wasn't going to be in anybody's tiered booklets of how to sponsor, I'm just saying, for the dollars that that company put into that. So I think that's why they felt the need to have that in place.
So I guess then it comes down to the question of how deep are we going to dive into it, into sponsorships? And you're asking me.
No, just, just if you're okay with.
I made a comment at the last meeting that, hey, pimp it out, you know? I'm okay with it.
So do you think we need a standalone policy, is it okay revising?
I think for what we have and what, um, you know, unless some big shot comes along, um, I think we're fine embedding it in. Uh, I don't think we need a stand, and for what I foresee as us doing, more of a minor to middle of the road scale, I think it would, it would work fine.
Good. Stephanie?
We should be able to embed it in existing policies because regardless of what path we choose, they can't conflict with existing policies, that has to be checked anyway. Guarantee isn't going to be eroded by either version, so that's not a, that's not an issue. The details of what sponsorship looks like is a procedure, not a policy. So that's not, not up to us either. So if we can embed it, it would probably be the easier way to go. To still have it covered, keep it general enough, but then have detailed procedures behind it.
I agree with what Stephanie said, as far as the detailed procedures and costs and Dharma, I think that's up to the administration or Dave especially, if he's working with our facilities as far as to come up with, if he wants a tiered system or if it's a situational negotiated basis. The only thing I was curious as far as bringing, I'd assume at some point if we're doing any kind of sponsorship, it should be coming to the board for final approval anyway. I know one of the, it was Waukesha, or one of them just said, building principal could approve it. I would assume all that stuff should probably be coming before us anyway, especially if it's something that we don't want to wind up mistakenly approve, something that is controversial and not in the good taste.
John?
I think it'd be easier, cleaner to have a standalone.
Okay. Stephen?
I kind of like the base that we have and then kind of letting operations happen below this level of it to kind of keep things more flexible.
So just embed it in our existing? Okay.
I, I prefer embedding it in the existing too. I think it makes more sense that way. And then again, as everybody has said, build the procedures around that outside of the policy itself, so.
And to Kevin's point, right now, general advertising guidelines in our policy, it does say final discretion regarding whether to advertise and the content and other materials will be with the board. So I mean, if we're going to call, sponsorship typically means in return, there's some sort of quote-unquote advertising. And so that would have to go to the board, um, for final approval.
Okay, so what we'll do between now and the first December meeting is we'll work with Neola on embedding some language in the policy, share with everybody, review it ahead of time with the goal again to vote on the seventeen.
And then they'll give Dave direction?
Yep, and then he could, again, the, the example booklet from Maguano was only to let you know some of that other stuff. But be, as it's a development piece that he does plan in coming back with like what that looks like. Because we did talk, to, talk about a, you know, if we're like absolutely not in front of the auditorium or not in hallways, like all of that stuff needs to be worked through in terms of what the board feels comfortable with or some specific guideline. So that's the next step in the process then, so that will come back, Dave will come back then to the board to continue that conversation.
Okay. Any other discussion? Okay. All right, moving on to eight reports, school safety update.
Quick update, um, just wanted to give you, um, if you remember, a large chunk of dollars in the second round of school safety grants was to relocate the high school, um, check-in for visitors because the visit, visibility is very, um, blocked where it is right now. Due to the referendum and constructions and all of that, that probably will be at earliest a spring break project, if not summer. Um, but Todd has re-engaged with the fire inspector and all of the folks that we needed to do the concerns about if we take, uh, those two accidents as egress from there and all of that. So we have, you know, if, if that's not an option, the initial was, yeah, we think that will work, but we need the detailed piece on it. The, the second option is to just relocate it with more visibility. So I just wanted to give you a timeline on that, just so you were aware of like, hey, when is that happening? Um, so it's just from, in terms of priority with all the referendum work, it's not going to be happening in terms of all of that. So spring break would be the earliest, but most likely early summer on that. So we'll come back once we get the reports from the fire inspectors and all of the stuff before we do anything with that. I just wanted to let you know, so you're like, hey, whatever happened with that? But all of the other work in terms of cameras, we're just putting in the order for the mapping system we talked about and letting the city of Greenfield know that because that was a, a request that both the, the Greenfield School District and us and the city are really advocating for to help the rescue folks come in more quickly, identify locations of where something might be that needs some emergency. So we've submitted our building maps and some of the other pieces, and then they sort of used Google Earth as one of the other overlays. But otherwise, the additional, um, video cameras, walkie-talkies and all of that are either in the process, that we purchased them and just distributing them or all of the other pieces. We don't have the locked door piece, the, those are still being ordered in the second round. Yep, so that's really the only update in terms of that, so.
Did the Department of Justice, uh, uh, use up the last third, the last? Did the Department of Justice, uh, use up their last third, last monies?
You know, we haven't heard if, there was, there was like, it went silent after that. I, so I don't know. We, we can assume, but I-
Assume what?
That it was-
Assume nothing.
Okay, there you go. Assume nothing is right, yeah. I didn't hear of any district that got denied. There were some people, like we did, had to go and submit some things to clarify it again, so-
For the third?
For the second round of them.
The second.
Yup. We just, they had a clarifying question.
But they clearly stated there was still-
I thought so.
Money sitting there, right?
I think so, if, if all of that was spent, correct.
Round three.
Okay. Okay. Anything else? Okay, B, referendum construction update.
Well, thank you to everybody who attended, and if you didn't check out some of the photos from last Wednesday for the groundbreaking. On last Monday, the plan commission of Hales Corners, they approved our plans for that. We do have to come back, which we knew already with the storm sewer folks, because there were some things that were still there, because that had doubled in size in terms of once the original MMSD and that had came back. So we knew that, working with Kapoor, that that would have to, but that doesn't delay any of that. So sign is up, construction is started, playground is in the process of being, or is it all apart?
The playground has been demolished.
Okay, so we've made some recess adaptations and schedules and parent traffic redesign. So, um, we're, yup. So we're, we're underway. We'll see, there's snow on the ground now, so we'll see how long that is in terms of that construction. But, um, yeah, we're off and running with what appears to be that. Early, the two meetings in January, as you've heard from C D Schmidt before, you'll be approving the, the next bid packages and go with that, so they're in the process of that. So we start official construction meetings on December sixth. Those become weekly construction meetings. They'll, they'll turn into design meetings that we've been having with Bray every two weeks into actual construction meetings now weekly, and, and what are the updates on that? So we're, we're, because Bray is almost done with their design work. There are no longer design work as we move into construction work. So that's just a transition that we locally will be making, too. So we'll give updates in terms of there that we run into, but that's sort of where we are with stuff right now.
Contrary to news articles, the old wing will not be demolished starting this week.
Correct. It's the last thing to actually be done in the entire project, not the first thing, unlike the news article. You are correct.
Okay, thank you. C, SWSA report and major site of update. Quinn?
We do not have a meeting in November. We'll have a meeting in December, second, second Tuesday in December.
Great, okay. D, school board PTO and liaison report. So Quinn will start with you for Edgerton.
Uh, Edgerton. So I had the honor again this year to play Santa at the Holiday Craft Show. It was actually, uh, it went quick this time, and they, they stuck me for another hour, too. I was there for three hours. Yeah. And I mean stuck me. They, they just did it without asking. I was just saying no to a bunch of ladies, right? But it went quick. There was a lot of people there. And they just, you know, those PTO ladies, they just keep making money. They just keep making money. And they spend it, too. So that's all I got.
Great. Stephanie for the middle school?
The middle school PTO is a phenomenal tour de force, because they started from pretty much the ground up again last year, because it had gone dormant for several years. And in all of liaison work that I've done over the years, and I've covered every school once, and some I'm on my second round, those parents have just raised it. And they have done their fundraising. They've gotten help from the student council. They've donated time and resources to the student council that's particularly active as well, to support those students as much as they possibly can, with haunted hallways, donating chaperones for dances and for events. They've helped with the book sale to get more in, more materials into the new library section. And they are constantly looking and constantly working and trying. And they're a remarkable group of parents, and it's amazing what they've done. Bob, tell them I said so, too, because they're, they're a great group of parents. They are also looking at academics at the meetings. They've had their specialists come so that they've been able to, to have discussions about what some of the coaches have been doing for their children. So they have, they have hit every level of operation at that school, and it, it has been a privilege to watch it happen. And it's going to be a great year for them. So they're just going to keep on going, so it's been good.
And what night of the week does that meeting fall?
Wednesday.
Wednesday?
They're Wednesday.
And are they, is it out on the middle school website with the dates yet? And it comes out with the middle school weekly notes, too, as part of the connect?
Yeah, it's in the, the day, in the connect, and they're on our, in the middle.
Perfect. Great. So for any middle school parents that are interested, check those resources, you'll find the dates and-
They leverage social media very well.
Great.
To help them and help that information get out to everyone, so. Good group.
Great, thank you. Kevin?
Yeah, the HC PTO meeting was last week, Tuesday. It was Tuesday, right? Again, the amount of fundraising they do is just tremendous. When they handed out the treasurer's report to see how much money they've raised and what they've done, and all the activities they have planned, it's just quite overwhelming. We did have, I believe it was Ms. Heckenberger that was there, talking about music. She was the teacher giving the report. It sounds like she's got a lot on her plate, but it is also sounds like really exciting stuff that they have coming forward. I believe grades two and three have their winter concerts coming up December thirteenth in the evening, correct? I think like six and seven, right around then. And then the other ones are spread throughout the year. I know there's some TBD, but is it third grade she's planning a musical? Third and fourth?
Third musical, yeah.
Third grade. So it sounds very exciting, but yeah, everybody seems to be doing just a phenomenal job as far as organizing events, donating, like Chris mentioned for Edgerton, the same thing with Hales Corners, donating money for field trips so that kids can go to the planetarium or wherever it is that they're going. So I think the next meeting's not till January, because there's a lot of stuff going on in winter, but yeah, very exciting, a lot of things happening.
Great, thank you. And then Stephen for the high school?
Uh, for the Bush Club, right now, you know, they, you know, they transitioned over this year to different leadership is, I'm totally blanking on her name, or called left, and so they-
Nicole?
Well, it's Nicole's in charge now, Nicole Barakowak. So things that they're still looking at is the usual kind of push bomb party, looking at their spring fundraiser. Concessions are going. It's, for the most part, everything has a student group working with. I think there's only two winter dates where there isn't someone already signed up.
Oh.
And that was something that Dave Pentec wanted, available for all those things. That's kind of about it, I can think of.
Great. Okay, thank you all for the reports back. And then E, referendum monthly financials. Mike, we got the update earlier, basically.
Yeah, any questions?
Any questions? Okay. Onto nine, items for future consideration. Any? Okay. Ten announcements.
Boys Swim is at Greenfield, in case you want to go, at five o'clock on Wednesday. Also, I believe our boys' basketball opens, well, they don't open, but their home opener is on Friday against Saint Thomas More. I think Varsity starts at seven fifteen.
And I think it's Hales Corners tree lighting, I believe on First with the middle school band playing. There is, the jazz ensemble is playing at the Burner Botanical Garden on Saturday morning at ten thirty. And then I believe the winter concerts are December twelfth in the auditorium.
Great, any other announcements? Okay, Kevin, meeting debrief?
I have one. I, I think that as a board, we need to respond to emails, whether we're gonna say yes, no, or I'm, I'm not gonna make it. It puts a lot of undue stress on our administrators and, and on Jonathan. I think it's just good sports, good boardsmanship to do it, so.
So we had a good discussion, I had about everything.
Pardon?
I was just gonna say, I thought we had a good discussion about all the topics we had at the lively meeting.
The only thing I would also mention is, please make sure that you're going through and looking at all the files in the, the agenda drive for that meeting, so you're aware of what's there, what's been given out. So when we come to the meeting, and we all know what's there, we can all reference it, and it's not, I didn't get that one, is that if you don't see something in there you expect to be in there, send an email to Kathy or myself or Lisa ahead of time. We can look at it. But otherwise, if you could just familiarize yourself with all the attachments, it, it would make things a lot easier, too. Okay?
Anything else? Okay, so then I'll take a motion to adjourn.
Some moves.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? See, non-motion carries. Thank you.